I'd like to welcome everybody here to our public hearing tonight. We'll have that before we start our planning commission meeting. It's March 20, 2024, Wednesday, 7 o'clock. We have two issues that we posted for review and possible comment for our public hearing. One is a rezone request from Scott and Patricia Wyatt. They own property on Sky Lake Drive. They own two different lots and they, their interest is in shifting the boundary line between those two lots. But in doing so, the one lot will be an R119 and the other will be an R1. They're interested in enlarging the one lot in order to put a shop on it. These two lots are adjoining, so it's, normally if, if there was enough property there, we wouldn't need to do a rezone. But since the property is currently zoned, both of them are 1, they want to make the one smaller. So that's the... Pardon me? Anyway, that's the essence of the one area for public hearing. And the second area is to solicit public comments considering changing the setbacks on swimming pools. Right now, it follows the accessory building, which, accessory building standard, which requires it to be 20 feet away from a home. And as we've looked at it and researched, researched it, we can't come to any conclusions why we have the 20-foot rule there for swimming pools. It does create a problem. It takes, it pushes the pool 20 feet away from a home or garage, whatever. And so what's under consideration is the verbiage. Although it contains a whole ordinance there, the verbiage would allow swimming pools to be set closer to the home than 20 feet.
Wasn't there also an issue that the swimming pool had to be within the confines of the house behind it?
It can't be forward from the front plane.
Well, we knew that.
But it can be on the side.
But, but the current, I thought the current ordinance would not even allow it on the side.
No, it does allow it on the side.
Okay, alright.
We just started our public hearing, opening up for public comment. Wondering around.
Trying through the wrong doors.
Glad you brought him in. You're not the first one to experience that. So with that in mind, is there anybody present here who would like to make public comment on either of those two topics? Okay, are there any zoomed into the meeting that wish to make comment? I see Mr. Wyatt here, you're zoomed in.
Yes.
Very well. Do you want to add to whatever, anything that I may have said?
So I didn't, I, I came in at the very end of what you were saying, so I didn't hear anything you said. But I'll, I'll add to whatever you said. Basically, what the purpose of this is, I needed, I, I needed to add an accessory building and we just had no access for when we built our new house because of the slope of the property. So we bought the, we bought the lot next to ours to be able to add an accessory building. But with that, it looked like we could subdivide that, take about .3 acres of that one acre lot we bought to put it into our existing, where our home is, and then basically subdivide out the .7, .71 acres to a separate lot to be used future date. I mean, I have no plans for it, but I, my son has mentioned that he'd like to move up there at some point when we get too old to be able to take care of ourselves. But through that process, talking with Jody, she said it might be easier to just do it all now rather than try and do it years down the road. So that's what our hope and expectation is, is just to subdivide that off, basically make the one acre lot .7 acres and then pull the .3 acres to tie it into our existing home so we can utilize the utilities from our home for the accessory building that I will be building.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, I didn't misspeak then with my explanation.
Okay.
So, very good. And I don't see anyone online who is interested in making public comment. So we will conclude then the public comment portion of our meeting, as there is no public comment.
And sorry I'm late. Thanks Alan, thanks Alan Purvis for reminding me. I was actually getting ready to go out surfing, so I don't mean to rub it in, guys, but...
Well, I'm glad you're here, so...
Yeah.
We will go into our, we'll have a discussion on that.
Okay.
We'll go into our planning commission meeting now. We will call the meeting to order. Simon, we'd like to welcome you out here as one of our alternates, first meeting ended. And understand we're, we're going to try to make most of our meetings and involve with our discussions and things. With the folk, just so that you know, with a full complement of commissioners here, you won't be able to vote, but we want your participation with, with your thoughts on whatever the discussion is. So feel free to invite...
You want to shut your door over there and then... Oh, no, I'll just come in.
Yeah, if you could mute yourself there, Carol, for a minute. We'll start the pledge of allegiance. Simon, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance? And Larry, would you offer invocation? I'd invite all of you to stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we approach thee in prayer at the beginning of this planning commission meeting for Woodland Hills, grateful for this opportunity. Grateful to be able to discuss items of business as it relates to our community and those who reside here. Grateful for this land in which we live, in this area in which we live, good friends, good neighbors. Pray that you might have the necessary knowledge and help to make wise and beneficial decisions. Thank you for many blessings in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I might point out too, Brian Hutchins is here with us tonight. He's one of our city council persons and he gives some oversight for planning commission. So he'll be meeting with us from time to time, so we welcome you here, Brian. First, next item on the agenda, is there anyone present here who would like to make any public comment about anything? We give you two minutes if you choose to do that, just kind of an open forum. This meeting is being recorded, so your remarks will be recorded. But if any of you choose to do that, you're, you're welcome to do it.
Got anything around on the zoning or anything?
Sure. Let me ask you to come up to this, this microphone here and turn it on. And... State your name too for...
Alan Purvis.
Okay.
705 Sky Lake. I'm just curious, I guess, if it's open meeting. I just had some questions on some fencing. I've heard different stories about what can be done to put up fencing on our property and heard several things, looked at the city, but what are kind of the rules with that?
We have several different fencing ordinances for different parts of the city. But there's, they're a little complex in detail. But we do review and approve all fences and we'd invite you to look at the ordinance and, and anything that you feel is not clear there, feel free to give me a call or Jody Stones here at the city, she's our recorder. We can answer any questions that you have. We usually try to approve them. If, if all the information and detail is forthcoming, we can approve them within several days after a request is submitted to us.
So I saw in the, it said like you could have a fence for gardens and things like that, some livestock.
Yes.
What about a full perimeter fence?
Fences are restricted in the front of a home. And there's limits on the height of a fence also, so...
And also the type of fencing.
The type of fencing, yes. And our ordinance explains all that detail.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, I've read that, but then I've heard there's kind of been some changes because some people have been allowed fences, some haven't. So I was kind of like trying to get an idea of what it is before I submit plans, but...
Let me say this, some people put fences up without approval. We are, we are, try to be consistent in the way that we apply that fencing ordinance. What applies to one will apply to the other. It's in the same part of the city. So if you've got some specific questions, happy to answer them or...
No, I was just looking, I wanted to put up a full perimeter fence, basically, except you know, have a driveway. It would be an open fence, so it'd be, you know, you could see through it, stuff like that. But it would be a fence all the way around, maybe a 20, 30 foot setback from the road or something like that.
Now, there is an allowance for, I think it's, someone say 35 feet setback for a fence in the front of a home, or, excuse me, along the road of a home. But, and the idea behind that is the city wants to try to retain a, 30 feet.
30 feet.
Wants to retain a wildlife corridor, so there...
You really can't go beyond the front plane of the house.
So I live on the whole rung of Sky Lake. My property wraps around, so the road goes all the way around me and...
It has to be 30 feet back from the roadway.
Okay.
For that wildlife corridor that he talked about.
Okay.
You can actually put the fence right on the property line now. It doesn't have to be off the property line, but it has to be back from the front plane of the house. So if you draw a line from across the front plate of your house, you can have a fence beyond that. Can't be more than six feet high. It has to be open so that at least 75% of it is open. We're talking about the area, the area.
Yeah.
If we're down in Four Seasons where Simon lives, it's totally different.
Okay. Alright.
Yep.
So mine, mine's kind of a weird shaped house, I'm kind of, I have the road that goes all the way around. So if I did 30 feet back from that road around...
Well, not just the, on, along the roadside.
Yeah.
Once you, once you're behind the front plane of your home, you can put it on your property line.
Oh, okay.
Around on the side.
Well, I'm kind of, it's kind of a weird, like, the front plane is, is pretty unique for mine.
Yeah.
Okay.
So maybe it's like, maybe I need to just probably draw something out.
So that's, that's what we ask is a site plan.
Yeah.
Show us where you're putting a fence.
Okay.
And then we can talk to you further about it if those issues with...
Okay, alright.
So...
That's all I had, thanks.
Okay, very nice to have you with us tonight.
Alright.
Is there anybody online who wishes to make any public comment? Okay, we'll conclude that portion then. And we'll go to our start a regular business and discussion agenda. We've got the February 21st planning commission meeting minutes to approve. I didn't, I recall, I don't think I got any corrections for it.
It was a pretty short meeting.
It was, yeah. So, anyway, so I'll take a motion for the February 21st minutes.
I move that we approve the February 21st, 2024 planning commission meeting minutes. I'll second that.
Second, Larry, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well, thank you. Next, let's have a... Let's have a discussion on the zoning change at 696 South Sky Lake Drive. I change, and I think I sent, I sent this out to everyone.
You did, you did.
So you saw a map there, how he's looking to divide it. And we, the city's reviewed it and doesn't have any issues or, or concerned about, concerns about that, so...
The address we need to change for the new R119, because it is no longer on Simon, as I recall, is that right?
Yeah.
Yes, it'll be on Mountain Vale.
Yeah, it's a good point.
And the surveyor I have already has an address number that I, I don't know if he selected it from the county or not, but it's in the proposal of what the address would be. But obviously we'll put it whatever you guys need it to be.
Okay.
I have a question. If we switch it to a different zoning, how does that affect the fencing on that lot? Are they allowed the different fencing, like down below?
No.
No.
Okay.
Because the fencing is, is with location in the city.
Okay.
Not, not...
Not the zone, okay.
The R119 fencing here would be the same as Summit Creek has, which is the same as most of the rest of the city. The only difference is down in Four Seasons area. So it wouldn't change that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, this is putting, that new lot will be a lot smaller than the usual one acre minimum. But I think a lot of people might welcome that, that have larger lots that may want in the future to have to buy them.
In that section of the city, almost half of those lots are under one acre, even though they're zoned R1-1.
Really?
They're about .8 or 8.5 because they take out for the, the road.
Ah.
I know, see, my lot is, is a two acre lot, but it's actually 1.82.
Because of the road?
Yeah. Any other questions or... Okay.
Now, tell me again, that'll take out about a third and leave about .7, is that correct?
Yeah, I think it's like .7, .712, I think was, I mean, obviously we can move it a little bit one way or the other. But the purpose was I tried to decide where I could actually fit the shop and then whatever was left over would be in the lot. So it's about .3 into my home on 696 Sky Lake Drive. And then, and then the remaining, I think it's .71, would be the other lot.
Now, the setbacks on, Mr. Wyatt, the setbacks for accessory building, it has to be at least 20 feet away from the main house. It would have to be 30 feet away from Sky Lake. But you've got about five feet, five feet from the property line. So you're going to be fitted in there alright?
Yeah, easily. But my projections are about 60 feet from the house and we're about 30 feet off of the side property line and 40 or 50 feet off of Sky Lake.
Okay, okay, very good. If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to make, to approve that and make a recommendation to the city council in that regards.
I move that we approve the zoning change for, you know...
696.
692 or 696.
696 is what we're changing.
That's what we're changing?
Yeah.
Well, we're changing 692.
692 becomes 11, doesn't it?
Yeah, we're changing 692. 692 goes from a one point something acre lot down to a seven, well, .3 goes to 696, the other goes to the new lot on Mountain Vale.
Alright, I then move that we approve the change of lot 692 from an R19 to an R119.
Okay, as presented. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well. Well, I think the next council meeting is available to put this on their schedule.
Okay.
So we'll, that's what we'll work towards and Jody Stones can let you know on that.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks Alan for reminding me, you're a good neighbor.
You can hear across the street.
Alright, everyone take care.
Very well, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
See you.
We're going to have some discussion on one topic, so let's, I'm going to change them around a little bit. Let's go to item nine, final plat approval for Bellevue subdivision, phase B. I've sent, yesterday I sent around to everybody the, the information we got back from Jones and DeMille, from, from their review. Both their comments and as well as the various plats and pages to it that they put together. I'd like to turn a time over to Steve and/or Carol, whichever one or both, to make a little presentation and any comments that you feel would be appropriate to make, Steve.
No, I'm totally, this is a repeat. We've been, I think we went through the commission, we already went through the commission and council once and we got approvals. We actually had a final plat, well, we had a preliminary for everything and a final and we did that for the first two lots. This is us re-getting a preliminary for the remaining lots. And then, well, we went and got a preliminary for the, for these lots and got approved. And so you guys have already seen this and then we resubmitted, pretty much the same stuff, made some adjustments based on your guys' comments and council's comments and resubmitted for final. Here we are for final, for these same lots. And we, we did review all your comments. Wayne and Ken Byrd wanted to be here, but he's on an airplane to go watch his kid try out for the Olympics, how about that? You know, so on the swimming side of things. So he's, he's playing dad duties, so I'm, I'm trying to play engineer and support. So with that being the case, he's looked them over, I've looked and scanned over all those, Wayne. All those adjustments are, you know, minor adjustments and we, obviously to get final approval can accommodate, what we did talk to was that we saw your, your, your concerns or your comments based on the county's feasibility letter on the septics. Like I alluded to, to Wayne, yes, it's always been understood. I think that this is actually even recorded down at the county on, on the lots and so they can retrieve this feasibility study every time they look at these lots. The feasibility study is plainly to state that these can be developed because they can be built on. But the, the caveat to that is that every builder has to go and do their own site plan because their site plan may or may not work on the, the lots. You, you never know until they go and do their own site plan. So there's, they gotta get signed off through the county as well for their plan. And as I alluded to, Wayne, yesterday, it could go either way. They could go, yes, certainly it has to be alternate or the builder can find a, because we didn't, we did not look at every inch of that lot for, you know, its, its ability to perk. And so at the end of the day, we, we, we went and found a location we believe makes sense for a builder. At that point, however, in Eagle Mountain, we did that and we had a parcel similar to that said, had to, sure, it had to be that, it had to be alternate. Well, the builder went and found a way to be conventional on the lot. So he found a location that perked and so he ultimately got it passed through conventionally. So you have a lot of different layers that these builders are going to have to go through. However, Wayne, we have no problem including the, the dock to the plat. Like, again, we want to be a good development and we want to make sure that we're letting people know what they're buying, just as much as anybody does. And so from that side of it, we have no problem. Again, it's already recorded down at the county. So any questions? Did I do a good enough job there, Wayne?
You tell me.
I, yeah, oh, you, this is our, you guys have already seen this. This is our second time on this six lots, actually the third time, including the initial preliminary that we, we did with your group. So rinse, recycle and repeat, I guess, I don't know.
So this, this takes care of the septic question, but also questions about the road base.
Yes.
And they would rest that, it would like?
They have in that remarks part. What, what I had talked to Steve about doing is, and they've got a note here on septic, and add a line referencing the letter that county health gave to them so that, just trying to be as transparent as possible to potential buyers. And, and they can then get a copy of the letter and look at it and, and see. There's three lots that are identified in the letter that in the initial review that county health did, they felt that there may be a, an alternate septic that may be required. Now, as Steve mentioned, maybe they're smarter than, than others and can figure out a way to conventionally do it. So that's, that's be up to them, but we just wanted this letter to be part of the, of the plat so that people, people knew that. I had a couple of questions if I might, if the rest of you may be thinking. There's some, there's some things in the, the analysis that Jones and DeMille did and I've taken them and just kind of put them into a single document, which I can email to you, Steve.
That would be great.
And I'll just, let me just read them off here for...
Sure.
I, I put a copy on all of your, it says additional items for final plat on Bellevue subdivision. Need a block for planning commissioner to sign off on. Remove the water authority approval and replace it with Dominion Energy approval. There isn't a water, we provide our own water.
You guys provide it.
There isn't a need for, for approval on that. And as you know, if you're going to, um, want to record before the improvements are done, we'll need cost estimates from you for that.
Engineer, engineer for the bonding.
Correct, yep. There's also, our engineers have asked for an AutoCAD file.
Yep.
For...
DWG, we can get that over to you, sure.
Okay. Also together with a title report on that and...
Well, we have, we currently have two title reports. What's the lapse time on your title reports that you guys care about? Because we've done this title report twice and... Cause we've done this title report twice and nothing's really changed, but.
Just current, I mean, whatever, whatever the current is.
Okay, so you guys don't have like a, a lapse time, cause I can send you like two title reports. Do you have like a lapse date, or do you want one that's just today, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Ties in with the final plat approval process.
Yeah, cool.
So, uh, one question we had, are you planning on having any CCNRs in the subdivision at all?
Nope.
Okay.
Not that we're, not that, not that we have been planning for.
Okay. Um, evidence.
Carol could choose to, um, change that. I'll, I'll, we'll talk with her about that, but we would make sure that that was addressed before final plat.
Okay.
Does that neighborhood or area already have?
The only ones that I know are the WIPA ones that are, they are what they are. There's no organization, but there are CCNRs that WIPA has, that that area is part of.
But, but they haven't been active for, well, fifteen years?
In two thousand fourteen. So.
Ten years.
No. And then we need evidence of the property taxes all being paid on that property.
Yep.
It doesn't look like you've got a SWIP report yet, so as you get ready to do the improvements, we need a SWIP report.
Yep. The construction process, yep.
Yep. Uh, I mentioned the letter, and, um, would like, like you to include a note, and they're saying setbacks are governed by the R one-dash-one zone. So it's, it's clear there for somebody buying that they know.
They have to reference.
So, those, those were the things that I noted. Some of them were part of what Jones and DeMille did, a couple of them were not, so. And I'll send this to you, Steve.
That would be a blessing. That would be helpful, so I can hand it to Ken Byrd to get him to make those adjustments for you.
Okay, very good. And the, the la- last question I had, I know I see on your, on one of your plat pages on lot six and seven, you've got a retaining wall, uh, I guess it's a rock one coming, coming around there off the cul-de-sac. Is that, is the plan, and it looks like that's on the individual lot. So it'd be up to lot owners then to maintain that retaining wall, not the city. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes, a hundred percent.
Okay. Do you, is this road, what, as we looked at it here in the city, and you can tell me better than I can start.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is, is the road higher at, than, than these lots where they touch the road?
The road, the road isn't, the road, so in other, in other words, I'm trying to get, get what you're getting at. The road is not higher than the lots. The lots are, you know, the lots have a grade, and part of our, um, mass grade plan, right, that we have, uh, with your group, uh, kinda softens that because we wanna, we wanna make sure that, uh, we're, we're building, like we said, for example, we don't wanna erode and then have these, um, huge fall-offs, to your point, where you're, you know, having cars potentially fall off and die. That's not the, that's, that's not how we've planned it out.
Okay. That wasn't actually, I mean, concerned about it, but, but as we talked about it here in the city, we wondered about any kind of barrier to keep, uh, with the slope, to keep the dirt out of the ditch that are going to be going along there as well as the road. What, has there been any thought given to that, as, as you've talked to, to Ken about it? What, what are your, your plans to address that?
Yes, we, we've, we've been trying to navigate, and that's part of the reason why we, we've got the mass grade plan and stuff like that, is because the, you don't, um, you wanna make sure that you stabilize the site, to use a, a simple term, right? And as you stabilize the site, you're securing, um, securing the fact that, that the, the dirt doesn't, you know, you don't have rock fall and all that other different stuff. And so we've gone through the process of engineering, because he's got a, again, he's got liability, culpability for anything that we're stamping and approving on, on his end as well, from, from, uh, that side, and we're, we're, uh, monitoring every aspect of the code through Jones and DeMille, and between Jones and DeMille and stuff, we're accommodating all those concerns to keep it simple for sure. We've had to evaluate all that.
Okay, the same thing kinda applies on the backside of the home too, where you've got a slope there and, and some kind of, something to do there to keep the water from flowing into a.
Runoff.
Spilt.
Yeah, we had to analyze all that in the, in the process of, of, uh, putting the infrastructure in place.
Okay, very good. Those were the questions.
They're great ones.
That I had.
I had, I had one question, Steve.
Yeah.
I, I noticed on this final plat that up at the end of the cul-de-sac, it appears that there's a, a, a three-corner, a diagonal pie-shaped piece that doesn't appear to be a part of any of the other lots. Am I reading it wrong?
Yeah, so there's, 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 I'm not sure what you're looking at. I wish I saw it on the screen specifically, but, but there's, there's build envelope in there, there's the septic, um, um.
Six lots. Right there, yeah. It's part of six, and why it, why it separated, why it separated is there's a drainage.
All right, that's fun. I was looking at that as a property line. Now I understand.
Okay.
So, good, Steve.
That's a great question. Thanks for helping me out there, Wayne, seeing I wasn't looking at it.
I'm trying not to help you out too much here.
Well, when I'm saying help, I mean, I'm just saying like you're, you're, you're my eyes. I could see you guys sharing phones.
Oh, I just.
I appreciate it.
Any other questions that? I think, uh, you guys did a good job in putting this final together. By virtue that Jones and DeMille, they, you know, I think they're very thorough and most of the, the technical is, at, aspect of, of all of this, they, you guys addressed that sufficiently, so.
Those additions are really quite minor.
Yeah, yeah, they're just ancillary kinda to.
Yeah.
To the final plat, so. Okay, uh, if there's no more questions, I will take a motion on item number nine, final plat approval for Bellevue phase B.
I'll make a motion to approve final plat for Bellevue phase B.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well. That'll do it for you guys, Steve. Thank you.
Cool.
End, but.
I love it, right? My kids have come up here like five times and asked me for dinner, you know? So I'm, I'm probably gonna go catch them, but no, you're a blessing. You guys are great. Appreciate it.
Okay, I'm assuming Carol didn't have anything to add to your question or anything? Is that right, Carol?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you good.
Oh, shoot, I'm outside a Walmart in, uh, upper Oklahoma. So my phone wouldn't allow me to mute, so I'm so sorry. I tried to find a really quiet place. But yeah, I, I think everything was fine. I agreed with everything said.
Very well, thank you.
Okay.
So if you could send me that email, Wayne, and I'll get it. Do you have a timeframe for the next, you know, council meeting or what, what the process? Obviously, we're gonna make those adjustments and then, um, for final, but, uh.
I, I don't know what's on the agenda yet. I'll talk to Jody tomorrow and we can let you know.
Yeah, just send that in the email with, uh, the doc that you put together.
Will do, okay.
You guys are a blessing. Appreciate it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Steve. Bye-bye.
Next item, wanted to have a discussion on the swimming pool. Proposal, suggestion. Right, right now, the swimming pool follows the setbacks for an accessory building, which requires a distance of twenty feet from the main structure. Our research, we, not sure where that twenty foot came from. So it does make it difficult, somebody trying to put a swimming pool in, even a small one, to make it, um, twenty foot away from the main structure, and then still meet the side and rear setback, um, standards. So what we're proposing is the language here in, um, talking about setbacks, says, um, and it's interesting because this same setback requirement in our ordinance pertains to spas and hot tubs. And most people are gonna put those very close to a home. Yeah, so again, the question is, why, and I don't know, things get, get lost in translation sometimes, but that being said, the proposal is setbacks. Swimming pools, spas, hot tubs, and similar structures shall be set back a minimum of five feet from all side and rear property lines, and shall not be located in a front yard or in front of the front plane of the residence, nor located within any easement of the property. So that's what is being proposed for setback on swimming pools. Meaning that five foot away, um, from the side and rear, and then, uh, let me add here too, I'm sorry.
Is there something there too that says that the decking around the pool can't be closer than five feet? But it's not counting the.
Let's go ahead, I'm not sure. But the next item, such facilities can be as close to the residence as the adopted building code allows and must meet all applicable building code safety regulations. It says, any pool house or structure that is housing gas, heating, electrical, or other related equipment is considered an accessory building and must meet accessory building requirements found in the city code for accessory buildings, and must follow the permitting process. Next item is decking. Allowance must be made for any required decking around a swimming pool, but the decking can be within any rear or side setbacks. So your thoughts on that, on that wording? Is there anything there that causes you angst or feel that we ought to change it or modify it? Any thoughts?
The only, the only thing I have to re-talk, we've talked about this a few times. And I don't know if we ought, I don't know if we necessarily need to have a specific distance, like five feet. I think that we just need to make sure there does not put in utilities, things like that. And then it ought to follow more of the lines of the accessory building if possible. They can go up to, you know, if you think about that, is there something?
The only concern I have, I think, in relationship to that, is that we have a special fencing ordinance for swimming pools. And how does that fence fit in with the five feet away from a house?
Fence doesn't need to be against the house.
Well, I know, but.
But, but the fencing issue was, that's why the five feet was taken, so that there would be room for a fence around the perimeter wherever, wherever there's not a house.
And, and I, I didn't look at this, and I should have. How far away from the pool is the fence have to be?
There's no, no requirement. It can be, as long as it's enclosed, it can be as close or as far away from the pool as they choose to make it. It just has to be enclosed. The pool has to be enclosed.
So if, if you want to have decking all the way around the pool, and the pool can be any closer than five feet away from the house, that means you may not, I mean.
You're gonna have to have the fence go right up to the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fence is gonna have to go to the home.
And that's what usually happens.
That's what.
Is it comes out the side and then cir- circles the, the swimming pool, but the house itself acts as a fence on that side of the pool, whether it's side or rear.
Now, from my experience in another state, in two other states, having a pool, there was also a requirement that the gates or the entryway into the pool area have, had to be self-locking.
And we, that's in our ordinance too.
Is that in our ordinance?
Yes.
One of those states that we had, that, that's actually, that's a, that's a.
That's a federal code that they have.
All right.
And that's included, that, that has to meet that, I forget what it's called, but there's a name for it, and it has to meet those requirements that are in that.
I mean, we had one where the sliding glass door out of the, the house went right into the pool area. And so we had to have an alarm on that sliding glass door, so that if any little kids went out the door, then we would know somebody went out into the pool.
Oh, interesting.
What about the pools that, um, have those covers that are larger than the pool and they slide over and lock in place? Does that count, or do they still?
No, it doesn't. It's, can be an addition too, but not in place of. And some people have done that, have put those covers on their pools, but they still need a fence.
And what about pools that have those floors that come up and then lock in place and can't access it because the bottom of the pool has come up? They still need a fence?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good questions. Any other thoughts?
We won't specify the distance. We'll leave it up to code as far as the distance from the home.
Yes, if there is a code, wherever, if, that has to be followed. But we looked and we couldn't, we couldn't find that it was addressed anywhere with a swimming pool.
I think it is, cause you can even have those like balconies. I've seen newer homes too where they, they're swimming and swim outs.
Oh.
They can actually go inside the structure.
I'm trying to think if there's one over in Summer Creek. Is that way or not?
I don't think it's a swimming.
No. You don't?
It's just, it's just under the home. There's a portion of the home that comes over.
On the top.
The, the new Spanish work, rec center will have a river that starts inside the building, and then you float through it outside and around, and I guess you can come back in.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
There's something like that in it.
I think they'll close it.
Riverbuds. There's one like that in Riverbuds in Provo.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
We, we've had some concerns expressed to us about our current ordinance, and so that's why we decided to kinda take a look at it and see if it was something that we felt comfortable with, with modifying and whatnot.
Are you okay with our council question now?
Sure, yeah.
So the question I have for this.
Is that on, Brian?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Uh, is on the, well, it kinda combines with the decking as well and the easement, so in this, in the wording you, you have that allowance must be made. Again, that makes it very specific that, that we have to allow for that. You know, when you say must be made, I mean, that we. You know, when you say must be made, I mean, that we have to concede that decking, you know, any requirements for that decking needs to be there. I'm concerned, uh, the only concern I would have is if someone, if we allowed the decking, so we got the, the, the pool in right up to the easement, and then there's decking required, and they put that decking over the, over the easement. That would be my only, that would be my only concern with the wording of this, is that I think the decking should be, the pool, including the decking, should be within the easement, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Or out of the easement?
That's kinda what I was referring to, I said that. Because I think if we put a pool five feet, and then the decking's going over and the fence is there, that's actually a permanent structure.
So on B, could you put setback swimming pools, spas, hot tubs, decking, and similar structures?
Or even including decking, uh, something like that in there, in that verbiage? Just because it says in E, decking allowance must be made, so that means we have to, we have to make an allowance for the decking, so if the pool can go up to the easement, we have to allow the decking to be over that. And then a citizen could have to tear it up if they need...
There's a federal decking requirement, right? Within the code, it has to be, I can't remember what it is, how wide the...
And I believe the state adopts that federal code, so it comes to us through the state, um, so we could look up the state code on that, but...
I think it's three, I think we found it, Ben, you went, I think it's three feet of unobstruct, uh, unobstructive walking area.
Walking area, around, so I'm just concerned about that.
It can be cement, too, it doesn't have to be wood.
Exactly.
And I think it's the slippery aspect of getting out of the pool and having something there that's not slippery, you know, whether it's, whether it's a rough cement or however they wanna do it, but I think that's what is...
Yeah, I think it's also for safety, for some, for rescue, you need to be able to, you gotta get around.
Hand something to someone and have them pull it.
So if we, if we... Including any decking. Yeah, right after structures.
That would, yeah, that would, would assuage my concern with the verbiage.
It's uncommon to have, like that over a pool.
Yes, that's what we're talking about, so that five foot would be a clear, clear area, and any decking would need to be out, in, inside that easement, it would not cover over into the easement. Pardon?
Away from the easement.
Away from the easement.
Off the easement, because I mean, if we allow it to be over the easement, which we can do for sheds and things like that, those can be moved easily, but we could have a citizen come back and say, well, you allowed me to build this here, and now you're making me tear it up.
Yeah, I'm just referring to the, to the, to the decking, you know, if it's a slab of concrete, you know, you can pull that out, pretty much as easily as you can move a shed. I'm just saying it's not uncommon for cities to allow you to put pavement and decks and things in an easement because you have to just gotta back, go pull it out, replace it later.
And that's...
We have some residents that get upset when their rocks are moved, so, out in the street.
A lot of our setback ordinances are, there's consistency with staying off the easement. The only exception that we've made is the fencing, where, and, and the purpose for that is, if you've got a fence going on a backyard and it's five foot from the, from the property line, the other property owner's got five foot on his side for a fence, now you've got ten feet of grass that's growing, it's drying out, it's not getting watered, et cetera, so that's one of the reasons we allow for fencing to be on the easement. And, yeah, there's maybe times where a fence is gonna have to be taken out, but it's, it's much less costly to do that than digging up the end of a swimming pool or something like that. So that was the rationale behind, behind that.
So you put that in there?
Yeah, I, what I've written is, swimming pools, spas, hot tubs, and similar structures, including any decking, shall be set back a minimum of five feet, et cetera.
Definitely a lot better than it currently is, so...
Oh, life on...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, what we had, what we had before didn't make any sense.
Yeah. No. Any other thoughts? Let me take a, let's, take a motion then to recommend that change to the city council?
I'll make a motion that we approve this, um, change with the inclusion of any included decking, or any decking?
Including any decking?
Including any decking in section B?
Yes, part B. Okay?
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next thing was, I wanted to, it kinda, it's come up lately, and so I just wanted to have a discussion with you all about it here, see what your thoughts were on it. It has to do with accessory building setbacks. Similar to the, I guess that, oh, setbacks, I don't know about, but, our accessory building setbacks, um, where they keep them out of the front yard. Side yard is ten feet for a one acre or two acre lot, five feet for R119 or PUDs. Unless there's an abutting road, then it's thirty feet setback, where an abutting road is. Ten feet from the rear yard. Rear and abutting roads, it's twenty feet. The main residence, again, it's twenty feet, and I can see, I, I can see a need maybe to keep the distance from a home, however, we divide accessory buildings two different kinds, under two hundred square feet and over two hundred square feet. Somebody's got a little ten foot plastic thing that they wanna keep a lawnmower in and gas, ordinance says it has to be twenty feet from the home. And I've gone around the city, and that's probably the, one of the biggest violations, there's these little plastic, uh, things that have been shoved right up against the house, you know, and, and I, I don't see a problem with that, I don't know if we want to categorize another, um, size standard of a accessory building to allow something like that, or if we do change the setbacks, would it be something that a small, quite a small building could be accommodated in without a lot of trouble? So I just wanted to have your, your thoughts and input on...
One, one concern I have, is that you said an accessory building cannot be beyond the front plane of the house, I don't think that's true. Or if it's thirty feet away from roadway, it can be in the front plane of the house, beyond the front plane of the house. All over the place, and some of them we've approved recently.
In the front, in the front plane? I'd have to look and see, you may be right.
Remember, our infamous one over on Eagle Nest, that is the former cargo container?
Yeah, well, yeah.
As I had the argument, it's not fifty feet, but Jody reminded me, oh, it's only thirty feet. So it can't be in the, beyond the front plane of the house, too.
Code says it can.
Say again?
Code says thirty foot setback in the backyard.
Yeah. So that, that's going beyond what we were really talking about, in terms of a small, under two hundred square foot, whether or not we allow it to be closer than twenty feet from the house. I don't think we make any distinction between a portable accessory building and a permanent accessory building.
We, we didn't, yeah.
And maybe that's how we fix it.
Yeah, I'd say that was...
Saying a portable accessory building can be with, you know...
Do we define it square footage wise?
Under two hundred square feet, portable accessory building under two hundred square feet, or maybe under a hundred square feet, I mean, that's ten by ten.
Yeah, or forty, but, so if we, we say, if it's, if it's a ten by ten, we consider it portable?
Well, depends on how it is, if you put it on a pad, it's not portable, but if you had it on skids, then it's portable.
Okay? Do we care if it's on skids or if it's on a pad? Somebody's got a little pad out in back of their house and wants to put a little ten by ten on it, but it has to have skids?
If it's connected to the pad, you know, if it's built, if the pad is part of the building.
But none of these is, none of those portable accessory buildings, they're, we're supposed to turn in a site plan, correct, that shows where they go?
If it's...
But, but nobody, from that point on, unless you're putting power into it, it's never looked at again. So there's no way to ever know if it's portable or not, I mean, my shed's under two hundred square feet, it's on, it's anchored to a pad.
I mean, mine's anchored to a pad, but mine's over two hundred square feet.
Yeah, but you have footings under yours.
Yeah.
Well, I would suspect that most people are probably gonna acre them some way, aren't they?
I would hope so.
The wind would take them.
Yeah.
I have two that are not anchored, I have a wooden one and a plastic one.
Are they on a cement pad?
Nope, they're right on the ground, they've been there forever, haven't they?
Yeah. Arlo built one of them.
That's right.
Well, just beware, I guess. I, I think...
Can I mention something on the setback from the house?
Sure.
The, the one you cut from the house? Again, I was looking at it, keep my computer here, just, like that.
In our city code ten dash, or ten dot eleven dot two C, all accessory buildings, in, uh, section G, it says if the accessory building is attached to the main building, because that's one of the things that was brought up, uh, the building structure or is twenty or less, twenty feet or less in distance from the main building or structure, it shall not be considered an accessory building, and shall conform to all regulations and ordinance of the city building codes applicable to the main building. So if we're within that twenty feet, it's considered attached, it has to, we do have lots more regulation that, that goes to that, I just wanted to mention that, because that actually...
Because it also requires a building permit.
Yep.
So you're saying that if somebody put a little plastic one next to the house...
It's part of your house.
Be built according to code.
Even if you can stand in it and push your hands up and walk it away, that's still okay?
Yep. So even if it's not actually bolted up to the house, but is less than twenty feet from the house, it has to meet the same requirements as the house?
Yeah.
So, I, I just wanted to, to mention that I read that.
We, we've looked at the IBC and the IRC building code, and they don't have, they don't address that distance away from, from the home.
From the home.
And nor does the fire code, uh, unless it's attached, then...
Which, it, this does say that it's attached if it's less than twenty feet, which is part of the reason why we have the twenty feet, right, is the, is the fire code.
Yeah, but the fire code is silent on the distance.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but the city has not been consistent.
I don't disagree with you there, just like our, our swimming pool.
They made me put fire sprinklers in my shop and it's more than twenty feet away from the main house.
It's sprinkled, so it's sprinkled?
Yeah, he was told he had to do it.
Wow. See, and I, when we, I moved up here, and I've built homes in a lot of different places, and the bench from Bountiful, they require sprinklers, not in the garage, and up here we have to put them in the garage.
And I think that's because...
Which was wild, I was like, wow, that's...
That's the wildfire standard, because we looked at that today, which Bountiful doesn't have.
No, they don't.
So it's a requirement for...
I shouldn't admit this, but my house doesn't have fire sprinklers in the garage, but they made me put it in the shop.
Hope you don't have any car.
I told me the fire chief that, and he just laughed. It was the fire chief before him that told me I had to put it in the shop, and he didn't notice that they weren't in the garage.
So what, what are your thoughts on, I guess?
I mean, from what, from what, Brian?
Yeah, Brian.
What Brian has brought up, you know, if, uh, we'd have to modify that part of the ordinances also, that say, anything within twenty feet has to be all electrical and solar codes. If we were going to allow even a portable one to be within twenty feet?
So like my shed, I had to, I had inspected for the electrical code and everything else, so I think we're, we're doing that.
It says here, if it's less than twenty feet, then it's not, and attached, and it's not considered an accessory building and shall conform to all, uh, code standards that, uh, the house was required.
So if you have a little plastic building against your house, doesn't it then become attached?
Yes.
You gotta sprinkle it?
You gotta sprinkle it, better run a hose to that one.
I don't know what our, what our code actually says as far as how much square foot would need is sprinkled, you guys might know that, but I don't. So it might be, you know, if it's two hundred square feet, it might not need is sprinkled.
It doesn't address it by square foot.
Okay.
It's the kind of building that it is that it addresses.
Any building within twenty feet of the house has to be, be all applicable codes or something like that. I mean, when we were talking about the greenhouse, that we were gonna build, we, one of the proposals was in twenty feet of the house, and we said, you're, you're gonna have to sprinkle it, and they said, fine.
Well, it's a greenhouse, it probably would like, anyway. To water the plants, yeah.
I thought it was a life safety thing, isn't that why we're sprinkling? You're not gonna be sleeping in the greenhouse.
Yeah.
But within twenty feet of another structure, uh, it allows, you know, it can actually set the other structure, if it catches on fire, twenty feet is enough, just to reign heat to start it up.
Yeah, I mean, I just think about, if there was a wildfire right by, yeah, next year, our homes aren't really taking, they're gonna burn before the sprinklers even know anything's going on.
That's why we've got the green space, right? Why we have, you've got to maintain that, uh, twenty feet of, of water, grass, I guess I'm thinking about Severance shop and stuff. No, it, it might be, you're really lucky to that.
I don't, the sprinklers aren't there to protect an outside fire, they're to protect an inside fire.
Exactly, it's gotta be a bit, by six.
Yeah.
And they ruin a house when you go off, they don't build a house.
They save lives.
They do save lives.
Yeah.
They, they destroy flooring, ceiling, walls.
Yep, everything.
Someone said that, maybe it's hearsay, but there has never been a fatality in a home that's sprinkled, and one's died by fire.
We've heard that.
That's true in Utah, I don't know that.
Yeah, I guess, you know, they probably are true. I know sprinklers saved the house over, on the other side of eleven two hundred, on the Saban side, that was actually at that.
Wow.
And they had fire, sprinklers went off, put out the fire, and yes, there was some water damage, but you can see the house across the street, Eric, it was a big house, and it was a two hundred house.
Do you think there needs, there's room there for some modification to... Do you think there needs, there's room there for some modification to the accessory building?
Yes, I don't have one of those plastic sheds, but if I did, I think if I put it against my house, it would help the shed not fall down from the snow and so that would be a logical place to put it. They're stronger than I imagined, but.
Could we govern that by square footage, a certain square footage? That is a lesser requirement even, it can be attached to the home or whatever, but not... I don't even know if it needs a site plan.
Cause you can move a small one, right? 200 square feet is pretty hard.
No, I think in 100.
That's a pretty good size.
How, how big are those little ones?
I mean, eight by eight, it's still 64.
Not gonna get much bigger than an eight, but maybe a 10 by eight on like a steel, you know, shed kit, the plastic ones, it's smaller than that, so I think it's less than 100.
They make plastics eight by eight.
Yeah, you're only 64, so.
If you put a 100 square feet.
Save in 12 by eight, you're under 100 square feet.
Not like you're gonna get a shed kit that's bigger than 100 square feet. Yards and all parts.
That's why you want it next to your house to protect a little. Yeah, lean on it.
What about distance from a home for any shed? Right now, it has to be 20 feet. Should that be sized as well or could that be any?
The, well, I think that's what we're talking about.
Right, well, we're, we're talking about the shed, maybe 100 square foot.
Things that are less, less than 20 feet away from the house, if they are under 100 square feet, they don't have to meet all the building permit requirements.
Right? Do we wanna extend that at all, size wise, to any of the 200 square foot category we have now or less? Yeah, not allow, and not allow closer to the home than 20 feet.
I don't think so. If they got, if they've got something between 100 and 200 and they want it within 20 feet of the house, I think they oughta meet all the permit requirements.
If it's less than 20 feet.
If it's less than 20 feet. It's only those that are under 100 square feet that don't have to meet permit requirements and can be less than 20 feet away from the house.
Do they need a permit at all? But, I think I have a neighbor that has almost like a closet against his house, just.
Under 200 square feet, they have to give us a site plan.
But that's all, right?
That's all they have to do. That's, that's for any new construction. Wayne says there are dozens of small sheds right now.
It's hard to think of those as construction, when you just stick in the ends and.
Yeah, cause typically you're not, they're not doing much, they're just flattening out a little spot and sticking it there.
Plastic ones, you still have to construct.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna have things in a corner, you're gonna have to screw together or something, but, so.
They don't keep out, bug their animals, they keep up the rain.
Yeah, but typically, all those kits are all pre-engineered and different things like that as well.
Yeah.
I don't know if we should call it a structure.
Like a plant house.
No, well, they're not real.
Have we received complaints from neighbors about these sheds or we just noticed them wandering around the community?
That, yeah.
Obviously just noticing.
Yeah. And, and the more I look, the more treehouses I see.
Oh, yeah. I wish we had something to say about that, cause I have one of those in my backyard now that is, I think, it's just weird. They're stair right in the back of my house and now they're perched up high and.
Well, it's, it's probably only 10 feet from their accessory shed.
Right.
Too, it's close there and the one that I know of. So I don't, I don't know if, if we wanted to write a treehouse ordinance.
I don't want to. It's ridiculous you build one in the first place, but.
And do we need to look at playground sets that are more than 12 feet tall or 16?
Okay, time for adjournment.
No questions though.
Yeah, it is.
I think we can write this shed to, excuse me, 100 square feet. I think that would be an easy thing to slip into our ordinance somewhere as an exception and, um, and address that.
I still, I still think they should maybe do a, a site plan so that we can see if there are any safety, fire-related hazards, depending on what it's made out and where they're putting it.
I just don't think.
Usually we don't ask for that.
I know.
In a site plan, it's just location and the size of it.
I mean, driving, if you've been driving around and seen a lot of those, they're not asking, they're just.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. If there's no power to them and whatever, they're dangerous.
Some of them have extension cords to them for a light.
It is the street.
And some actually run hoses out to them, so they have water in the bucket.
But that's okay, isn't it?
Nothing says they can't.
Yeah, ring your hose wherever you want.
I mean, we don't require a permit for a sprinkler system, so why should we for a hose bib? I mean, we do say that a hose bib on a house has to have an internal shut-off so that it won't freeze in the winter.
Now, most homes now have that built in.
I have a hose bib that's out there that's part of the internal watering system and I shut, like, it's part of my sprinkler system, so I shut it off in the winter.
Yeah.
And drain it.
I've got about 18 of those.
I put an extension.
Long hoses.
I, I put a, one of the, you know, like, um, as part of the sprinkler system, I tapped into that and ran that hose into our, uh, greenhouse, so. Okay, well, let me.
If you lay it up on the roof, it'll be like a sprinkler system.
Hey, just run it a little bit further. I'll, I'll look, I'll see what I can do to work over this, this, uh, considered an exception. And, um, I had in mind, again, looking at some particular size and allowing it to be closer to the home, but it's a general feeling that we should keep that 20 feet, accessory buildings 20 feet from the home. Okay? All right. Very well, um. We recommend another. The swimming pool.
I did.
Change.
I did.
Lori, let me write that down. Lori first, it was a U second, or who second?
No, Larry.
Larry?
Have anything else?
Nope.
I'm over your turn.
I second it.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are you just visiting here tonight or?
Uh, I think I'm just beginning working on that map up there on the TV.
Okay.